Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Excuse me. Today is May 12th, 2016, and this is the final night of the 2016-2017 Board of Aldermen Budget Deliberations. Will everyone please join me as we salute our flag? Is there a motion to come out of recess?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Alderman Vitale.
Chair, since I'd like to make a motion to reorder if we can, since the Board of Education is here, rather than having them go through the lengthy discussion after, you know, the municipal part, I'd like to have them go up first, if that's okay? I make a motion.
Mr. Chair, we have to take roll and get the meeting underway before we reorder the agenda.
Harry? The deputies take the roll.
Alderman Anderson? Alderman Beatty? Alderman Bevan? Alderman Beer? Alderman Casey?
Here.
Alderman Germain? Alderman Genotasio?
Here.
Alderman Golden? Alderman Grant? Alderman Hardeman? Alderman Shaw? Alderman Smith? Alderman Veccharelli? Alderman Vitro? Alderman Vitale? Fourteen present, Mr. Chairman.
Fourteen present, we do have a quorum. Tonight is the final step in the budget process. I'd like to thank the mayor, the department heads, the finance director, and staff, as well as the Board of Finance, Dr. Fieser and her staff, and the Board of Education. I'd also like to thank the members of the Board of Aldermen, who have put in many days and hours considering this budget. Each year, we need to do the hard work to understand all the needs and wants of each department, as well as the 54,000 citizens of Milford. The Board needs to find balance between our citizens, students, and senior citizens, and adopt a budget that's in the best interest for the entire city. By the end of this process, by the end of this evening, I'm confident that we will adopt a prudent and responsible budget which yields the best results for our city. At this point, we will start our deliberations with the first departmental budget.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Alderman Vitale.
Can I, I'd like to make a motion, we reorder the agenda and put the Board of Education on, so they don't have to go through, they're here, and so they don't have to go through the lengthy process. Have a second.
A motion and a second to reorder the agenda to vote on the education budget. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Roll call, vote. Madam Secretary.
Alderman Beatty? Alderman Bevan? Alderman Beer? Alderman Casey?
Yes.
Alderman Germain? Alderman Genotasio?
Yes.
Alderman Golden? Alderman Grant?
Yes.
Alderman Hardeman? Alderman Shaw?
No.
Alderman Smith?
No.
Alderman Veccharelli?
No.
Alderman Vitro?
No.
Alderman Vitale?
Yes.
Seven, seven. Seven, yes, seven.
Seven, seven, tie, the motion fails.
Mr. Chairman? I'm sorry. I mean, in terms of this, we just want to get into the budget, and we can revisit this later on for the education?
Absolutely. Start our deliberations with the first departmental budget, Board of Aldermen on page fourteen of the budget books. Alderman Veccharelli, please begin with the Board of Aldermen budget.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion to approve the budgets for the following. Account number four one one one, Board of Aldermen, in the amount of $6,305. Account number four one one two, elections, in the amount of $130,000. Account number four one one five, registrar of voters, in the amount of $1,54,128. In account four one one six, MGAT, in the amount of $16,250. And account number four one two one, the mayor's office, in the amount of $272,004, as recommended by the Board of Finance for the fiscal year of 2016-2017.
Motion was made and seconded. Any discussion? Alderman Bevan?
Through you. Account number four one one six, MGAT, the amount of $16,250. I would like to increase that by $5,000 to $21,250, based on the fact that the money is not there to pay at the end of the year, and that's approximately half of what they actually need. I'd like to get a two-thirds vote on that to increase that one line item by $5,000, please.
Where exactly is that, on the budget, on the budget book, Alderman Bevan, does that appear?
Page sixteen? Or is it page sixteen? Page sixteen? So what I'm looking to do is account number four one eight nine oh 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 one, going from the $15,000 that is recommended by the mayor and the finance board, bringing that up to $20,000, making the total, personal services, making a total of $21,250.
We have, waiting for a second. I didn't hear a second, I'm sorry. Okay. Thank you, Tony.
Mr. Chairman?
Alderman Anderson?
Thank you. Sorry to have been delayed. Through you, Mr. Chairman, a question of the maker of the amendment. Would that not exceed the departmental request of $17,750?
Yes, it would.
And could you share with us what your thinking is?
Yes, the original amount of money of $17,750 was brought to the Board of Finance by the then-existing chairman of MGAT, which has now been replaced with a new chairman, and the other chairman, in my opinion, just did not do the math of approximately eighty meetings, at $300 a meeting, that would come to $24,000. And they're only, at the time, only asking $16,500. I believe that the original, original amount of money of $17,750 was incorrect from the beginning, and that's why I'm looking to reinstate only $5,000, not the complete amount of money which they may need. Even though they get grants, some of the grants may or may not come true this year, so I'm only looking for a $5,000 increase.
Are you open to a lesser amount through you, I mean, through the chairman to you? You open to maybe rounding it to $2,500 or three, as opposed to the full $5,000 request?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You have to, you have to rework those figures. Alderman Bevan? Well, I think he's asking him to retract his motion, and to make another motion with the lesser amount. Correct? Alderman Anderson?
Mr. Anderson, what was that number you wanted to bring it down to?
Three. Three, Bill, so we would be looking at $20,750. I'm sorry, $19,250, or an increase of $3,000.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I just respectfully request that in discussing these potential increases, you specify which line item you're increasing, so that I can keep track of it accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Again, through, through you fill to, Mr. Anderson, and we are talking about item number four one eight nine oh 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 one, personal services for MGAT. Are you increasing the fif, your suggestion, Mr. Anderson, is the fifteen to eighteen?
Yes, Alderman.
Or are you going from the sixteen five to nineteen five?
Fifteen to eighteen. Fifteen to eighteen.
Fifteen to eighteen.
Fifteen to eighteen?
Yes.
I'd like to change my amendment to read on account number four one eight nine oh 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 one, government cable service, personal service, for Milford Government Access TV, to go from $15,000 to $18,000, making the total now $19,250, please.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, rules of order, I believe he's gonna have to rescind his first amendment before he can...
That's what I was waiting for. Thank you, Alderman Genotasio. You've already made an amendment, Alderman Bevan.
I'd like to rescind my original amendment.
The person that, the Alderman that seconded the motion?
Yeah, I rescinded as well.
Has to rescind his second, then you have to rescind your motion, and then you have to remake your new motion.
Which I did once. I can do it again, though.
The second, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to rescind my original motion.
I'll rescind my second.
To now read, Milford Government Access TV, personal services, four one eight nine zero 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 one, government cable service, increasing it from $15,000 to $18,000, making a new department total of $19,250, please.
I'd be happy to second that.
You heard the motion and the second. Any discussion? Alderman Shaw?
Thank you. I guess through you to, to Mr. Bevan, I'm supportive of MGAT, and I think it should be expanded. You're one of the liaisons, and I guess for the $3,000, what will we, oh, no.
Not the liaison to...
Well, let me ask, let me ask you, what will be getting for the $3,000? We'll be getting expanded service, what will that be for us?
In my opinion, as the year ends, MGAT actually runs out of money, so they have to go back to the mayor's office and ask for more money to put this on the air, and if there's any money left over at the end, if they don't use the $3,000, it goes back, but in the past years, they have spent down to zero, and sometimes, some of the people that are doing the filming are not getting what the original amount of money they should be getting.
So, do you mind if I clarify, Mr. Chairman? So, we do an allocation at that point, or we just do without service?
No, you do not do without service, you continue to do it a lesser amount of money or zero.
Thank you for the clarification. Thank you.
Alderman Veccharelli?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When we spoke to the MGAT representative, we were told at that time that he does quite a few tapings of the Board of Education, but the money is to pay for that is coming out of the city side. And so, he was going to, and realizing that there are many cities that have, where the Board of Ed pays for their, their channel, you know, the tapings for their channel, and the city pays for their tapings, their channel, and so, at this time, they were going to check with the Board of Ed and see if they could get them to pay more towards the tapings to kind of pay for basically what they're using, and so, that's where I thought we had left this, we were gonna leave this account like this, and they were gonna go to the Board of Ed and talk to them about seeing if they can get some more revenues for their tapings.
Yes, I, I remember that conversation, Mr. Veccharelli, but if that does not come true with the Board of Education, they're still out the money. This year, I believe, we were told that the Board of Education gave them $1,000 for some of the extra meetings that they held, but that still wasn't gonna carry them through the rest of the year. So that's why I was looking for the extra money for them. Whether or not they go back to the Board of Education and actually realize the money from the Board of Education, which may or may not actually come true, the $3,000 extra that, that Mr. Anderson would help out tremendously in that, and I want to thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Any, any more discussion on the amended motion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call, vote. Madam Secretary.
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, this is on the amendment of account number four one one six, MGAT, correct?
Correct. I'm sorry, yes.
Okay. And Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Beatty?
Yes.
Alderman Bevan?
No.
Alderman Bevan?
Yes.
Alderman Beer?
Yes.
Alderman Casey?
No.
Alderman Germain?
No.
Alderman Genotasio?
No.
Alderman Golden?
No.
Alderman Grant?
Yes.
Alderman Hardeman?
No.
Alderman Shaw?
No.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Veccharelli?
No.
Alderman Vitro?
No.
Alderman Vitale?
No.
Seven, yes, seven, no. I mean, sorry, wait. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. We're missing. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Seven, yes, eight, no.
Seven, yes, eight, no, the motion, the amendment motion fails. On the original motion, any discussion on the original motion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call, vote. Madam Chairman, Madam Secretary, I'm sorry.
No.
Alderman Beatty?
No.
Alderman Bevan?
No.
Alderman Beer?
Yes.
Alderman Casey?
Yes.
Alderman Germain?
Yes.
Alderman Genotasio?
Yes.
Alderman Golden?
Yes.
Alderman Grant?
No.
Alderman Hardeman?
Yes.
Alderman Shaw?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Veccharelli?
Yes.
Alderman Vitro?
Yes.
Alderman Vitale?
Yes.
Motion passes. Alderman Veccharelli?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the budget for account four one two two, general expenses, as recommended by the Board of Finance, for the fiscal year 2016-2017, with the following changes. Add a new account, four nine nine eight zero zero one six, Milford Historical Society, in the amount of $2,000, for a new subtotal of $73,000, and a new department total of
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Alderman Casey?
Thank you. I guess it's through you to, I guess, I don't know, the finance director. This is a new item, it has not been passed by the Board of Finance, the $2,000 appropriated to the Milford Historic Society, so it's gonna require a two-thirds approval, is that correct? Through you, Mr. Chair, and yes, I believe so.
Any more discussion on the motion? Alderman Beer?
Thank you, Bob, Mr. Chairman. I'm not sure who added this item, but if someone could give clarification, what this money will be used for?
Mr. Chair, through you to Alderman Beer. The Milford Historical Society runs the buildings at the end of High Street, and their operational costs have increased significantly since they weatherized the buildings there to make them a year-round facility, as opposed to just a seasonal facility. They offer a place for field trips, historical tours, and they are now paying for electricity and significantly increased insurance. Members of the Historical Society have come to my office requesting that we help them out, because they do provide this service, they're a nonprofit agency that has been a part of Milford for many, many years. I know that they've approached many of the Aldermen as well. Again, this is a very token amount, $2,000. Most of their operational costs will still be borne by the Historical Society through their fundraising, through the donations that come into their coffers, but again, their operational expenses have increased significantly since they've made some capital investments. Again, it's a token amount, but it does demonstrate to this group that does a lot for our community that the city of Milford appreciates what they do.
Mr. Chair?
Alderman Anderson?
I'm very supportive of this, in large part, because the Historical Society has provided services to schoolchildren, and they make docents available to talk about various aspects of Milford's history. They've not ever, in my, in my recollection, come before us to ask for assistance, but they're now in a position where they could use the assistance to help defray overhead costs with respect to the three houses that they do have responsibility for. They do conduct cemetery tours on King's Highway and Cherry Street, and in many respects, they're an adjunct to Milford City Government. Even though they are a private nonprofit, we rely upon them for their historical knowledge. The president, Art Stowe, was just named by us, by this board, as the, the new city historian. And many of you, I'm sure, know Lloyd Jacobs and many of the other officers associated with the society. So, this is a small token to show an appreciation, I think, for the contributions that they made for the Milford 375th anniversary. They were, as many of you know, responsible for a number of events that were planned two years ago, and so, we have relied upon them as a city, and they've never really come before us to ask for assistance, and I think it's the least that we can do. Thank you.
Alderman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to, to second Alderman Anderson's remarks. I think for a city that's 377 years old, that's older than the United States itself, and for the reasons that Alderman Anderson just enumerated, I think it's important that we have an official stake in it. It is a, it is a nominal amount, it will help to phrase some of the costs that they have borne privately for years, and for the decades of service that the Historical Society has, has served this community. I think, as Alderman said, it is the least we can do, and I am fully in support of this addition.
Any more discussion on the motion? Alderman Genotasio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to share my thoughts and my perspective on this. We all are in favor of, of educating children and, and giving back to the historical nature of the city. There's no debate with that. All these services will continue to be met, I'm confident in that. They've been met throughout the years, and the issue at hand really is that this is a private entity, so if this ends up being passed, it sets a precedent, so moving forward, I know that you've used the phrase "token," it's just a token, it's only $2,000, but moving forward, it's gonna be on our budget books year after year, and it's gonna substantially possibly increase, and I don't know if that's the direction we want to go in, based on our state fiscal crisis right now. I think we should maybe, possibly, not vote this on, and maybe help them in other ways, through fundraising. I think that would probably help alleviate some of the stress, so I would not be supporting this for that reason. Thank you.
Any more discussion on the motion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call, vote. Madam Secretary.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Beatty?
Yes.
Alderman Bevan?
No.
Alderman Beer?
No.
Alderman Casey?
No.
Alderman Germain?
Yes.
Alderman Genotasio?
No.
Alderman Golden?
Yes.
Alderman Grant?
Yes.
Alderman Hardeman?
Yes.
Alderman Shaw?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Veccharelli?
Yes.
Alderman Vitro?
Yes.
Alderman Vitale?
No.
Eleven, four.
Voters eleven, four, motion passes.
Ten, five.
Ten, five. Ten, yes, five, no. Motion passes. Alderman Veccharelli?
Wait a minute, point of order, is it passing? It's a ten, it's a tie vote, you need a two-thirds, right? Ten, five is two-thirds.
Yeah, and ten, we got ten, so ten passes.
Yes, you're right.
Ten is two-thirds of fifteen.
It was a tie, meaning the tie in the two-thirds.
Alderman Veccharelli?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the budgets for the following. Account four one two three, Community Development, in the amount of $112,363. Account number four one two nine, City Clerk, in the amount of $369,042. And account number four one three one, The Law Department, in the amount of $607,262, as recommended by the Board of Finance, for the fiscal year of 2016-17.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the budgets for the following. Account four one three two, Ethics Commission, in the amount of $800. Account four one three three, Probate Court, in the amount of $18,299. And account number four one four one, Board of Finance, in the amount of $1,050, as recommended by the Board of Finance, for the fiscal year 2016-17.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the budget for account 4142, Permitting and Land Use, in the amount of $997,300, as recommended by the Board of Finance for the fiscal year 2016-17.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Alderman Bevan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make an amendment on this, please. And this is on page, page twenty-seven. And what I'm looking to amend is on page twenty-eight. It is under Personnel, Clerk A. I'm looking to reduce that by $34,927, which would make the new total $962,373, doing away with the Clerk A designation.
We have an amended motion and seconded. Is there any discussion? Do you want to wait for the vote first? Does it have to adjust anything? He gave you the adjusted numbers? Okay. Excuse me, Peter. Are you working on this?
You want to eliminate the Administrative Assistant Concierge Clerk A? Okay. All right. I'll have to revise the one-fifth fiscal week and another account. Just give me a moment, please.
Mr. Chairman, in the meantime, we'd like to take a five-minute recess, if that's okay. Thank you.
Okay. We are out of recess. Okay, Alderman Bevan, before we went into recess, you want to repeat that, refresh everybody's memory as to where you are? Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Permitting and land use. I'm looking to reduce Clerk A Administrative Assistant $34,927, bringing the department total down to, on Department 4142, the department total to be $962,373. But I needed the Finance Department to come up with the wage adjustment, I believe, to one-fifth. If you could, please tell the correct numbers.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Alderman Bevan and the rest of the board. If we eliminate Clerk A and reduce that from $34,927 to zero, we would also reduce contractual wage adjustment by $300 to a revised amount of $3,600. Position totals would be reduced, that total would be reduced from fourteen to thirteen, and the revised position total would be $835,343, which would be the new total for regular wages, account 4111000. Again, that amount would be $835,343. Account 41119942, one-fifth fiscal week, would be reduced by $174 to $4,159 for a revised subtotal of $897,753. A revised department total for 00104142, Department of Permitting and Land Use, would be $961,899. The total reduction for the department is $35,401.
Thank you, Peter. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Oh, I didn't see your hand. Sorry. Alderman Genitazio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to share my perspective on this position, this Clerk A. I don't feel it's a critical position. I don't think that it should be added to the budget. I'm not in favor of adding any new positions based on the state's financial crisis and based on the fact that through Mayor Blake's tenure, it seems to be a common practice to continue to add positions to the city budget. And I've expressed this before that this position could be accomplished through, or the directive of the position. I was told by the Director that it was to inform people, and I think we could accomplish that through signage and other means of technology. I don't think that there's a need for the position. I think people, mostly the contractors that go down to the department and visit there on a weekly basis, know the routine, they're familiar with it, and I don't think it's going to add any benefit. That's my opinion, so I will not be supporting this position, and that's the reason why.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mayor.
Through you to Alderman Genitazio. We are always loath to add new positions to the budget. Over the course of the last seven years, the City of Milford, city-side, excluding the Board of Ed-side, has actually reduced employees by approximately twenty-seven, twenty-seven employees over the last seven years. We are always looking to offset any new hires. In fact, this position is going to be able to eliminate two positions and add one new position. So it eliminates two positions that are admittedly seasonal temporary, adding one to the budget. However, we have eliminated budgeted positions over the last seven years by approximately somewhere between twenty-five and thirty positions throughout the course of the city.
Just to follow up.
Thank you for clarifying that, Mr. Mayor.
Just to follow up, Mr. Chairman, through you to Mayor Blake. I know that your thinking is that you're combining the position or you're doing away with a position, but at the end of the day, you continually add a position. So my point is that the taxpayers are never realizing the true savings in these departments. It seems like you always will add something rather than allow the taxpayer the benefit of the savings. And again, it's not a critical position. And we had testimony from someone within that department that works in that department every day, who knows firsthand the routine, and they weren't even in support of it. So I'm very skeptical. I'm willing to bet that it's really not needed, and I've been getting great reviews from that department. People are very happy and satisfied the way that it's been running. There's been a huge improvement. So to keep creating positions and increasing the budget for that department, I think at this point, based on economics, is financially irresponsible. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair, through you to Alderman Genitazio. As you can see, though, it's not increasing the budget. It's actually a decrease from last year. It's about an $8,500 decrease in this departmental budget from the 2015-2016 budget. That department, I have to agree with you. It has been a world of improvement. We have been getting great reviews from the current operations of the building inspectors and the building office. However, the reason why is because we are giving the tools to the Director of that department to be able to make adjustments and tweaks so that we can have continuous improvement, so that the services continue to increase while the cost of operations will go down. And again, under the proposal that the Director is recommending, that the Mayor's Office approved, that the Board of Finance approved, it's a budgetary cut, and at the same time, we're going to improve operations.
Mr. Chairman, just through you. In summary, I would just say that if we don't create the position, Mayor Blake, to your point, we would actually be reducing that department significantly more. That's my point, and I don't see the need. I don't think that the taxpayers are going to benefit any way by adding that position into that department. I think that really, at this point, we should allow a cost savings and not even entertain this position. Thank you.
Hey, anymore? Alderman Shaw.
Thank you, Chairman. Just a point of clarification. While there's, this position works in the Building Department half-days, every day, is that correct? And it serves a function? I believe that's...
The new position, the new Clerk A position, would be a full-time position, a thirty-seven-and-a-half-hour-week position. Presently, there are two people that work seasonal temporary in a part-time capacity in that department.
So the point being, and one thing that disturbed me when I first heard this, was the concierge portion, because I do agree with Alderman Genitazio in the first blush that if this is just a concierge, then that wouldn't sit right with me. But my understanding, and delving into this further, is that no, this is somebody who is in the Building Department and doing Building Department work. And to the overall point that the department has improved, I think it can go better, and I think it has improved. And that's why I want to give them the resources that they need, and so I am supportive, but I did have the same initial concerns that Alderman Genitazio. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Any more discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? No. Roll call vote, Madam Secretary.
Alderman Anderson?
No.
Alderman Beatty? Alderman Bevan? Alderman Beer? Alderman Casey?
Yes.
Alderman Gurman? Alderman Genitazio?
Yes.
Alderman Golden? Alderman Grant?
Yes.
Alderman Hardiman? Alderman Shaw? Alderman Smith? Alderman Veccharelli? Alderman Vitale?
No.
Alderman Vitale?
Eight no, seven yes. The amendment fails. On the original motion. Any more discussion on the original motion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Roll call vote, Madam Secretary.
Alderman Anderson? Alderman Beatty? Alderman Bevan? Alderman Beer? Alderman Casey?
No.
Alderman Gurman? Alderman Genitazio? Alderman Golden? Alderman Grant?
No.
Alderman Hardiman? Alderman Shaw? Alderman Smith? Alderman Veccharelli? Alderman Vitale?
Yes.
Alderman Vitale? Eight-seven. Eight.
Eight-seven. The motion passes. Alderman Veccharelli.
Mr. Chairman, over here.
Wow, you're making me spin.
I throw my voice. I was going to make a motion or ask if we can reorder the agenda since the Board of Ed is still here. I guess I can put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion and a second to reorder the agenda for the Board of Education portion of the agenda. Any discussion? Alderman Vitale.
I guess the simple question would be, why now? The insensitivity to the Board to make it original, and these people had to sit through this nonsense at this point? Why now?
Because we want to.
Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli.
Mr. Chairman, page seven.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the budget account 4996, Education Operations, in the amount of $91,611,950, as recommended by the Board of Finance for the fiscal year 2016-17.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Alderman Shaw.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm going to move that we reinstate the $175,000 that the Board of Finance removed from the Board of Education budget. Just briefly, in my comments before with the Board of Education, this was a unanimous budget that was approved by the Board of Education. They came in with a negligible increase despite the challenges that they faced, including contractual wage increases. I'll just point out, I think, things that you already know, is they went through successfully a reorganization of the schools as well as the increasing of buses. The Board of Finance did note that. I'm sure there'll be further discussion, but we also know that the state...
Excuse me, Alderman Shaw. Gentlemen, let's listen to Alderman Shaw. She has something to say. And the Secretaries have in trouble listening as well with the background, okay? Thank you. Alderman Shaw.
Thank you, Chairman. The state has cut upwards of four percent from the education budget. Even though the Board of Finance indicated certain areas, they don't have to cut those areas, and I certainly recognize that. But in two of the cases, both in the energy account and on the gas, I feel, and I mean no disrespect to the Finance Board, but I do not feel that they can know the... I think it was a wrong decision on their part. As far as the $40,000 for the SROs, I think the Board of Education's plan to use that to bring Harborside into parity with the Language Lab is the right way to go. So again, I'm moving to amend the Education Operations account 4996 with a grand increase of $175,000 to $91,786,950,000, and a new department total of $91,786,950. and a new department total of ninety-one million, seven-hundred-and-eighty-six-nine-hundred-and-fifty.
The amendment is, motion is made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Roll call vote. Madam Secretary.
Alderman Anderson? Alderman Beatty? Alderman Bevan? Alderman Beer? Alderman Casey? Alderman Gurman? Alderman Genitazio? Alderman Golden? Alderman Grant? Alderman Hardiman? Alderman Shaw? Thank you. Alderman Smith? Alderman Veccharelli? Alderman Vitro?
Eight no, seven yes. Seven, eight, eight no? Seven yes. The amendment passes. Oh, you gave me, okay. Eight no, seven yes. On the main motion. Any more discussion? Alderman Gurman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. I think it's very hard for me to support this, um, just because we had a, uh, we're getting a large reduction from the state, and then we still don't know what that number is. But it's anywhere from one-point-one to one-point-five, one-point-six million reduction that's coming to us, but we're voting on tonight, and we don't even know what that number is. With the Board of Ed budget, two-thirds of our budget, I think it's very hard for us to kind of make that decision and add money back, um, because we need to find a lot more money. So for that reason, I can't vote on it.
Any more discussion on the main motion? Alderman Anderson.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, uh, offer an amendment. Move to amend Education Operations Account four-nine-nine-six with a grant increase of forty thousand dollars to ninety-one thousand, ninety-one million, six-hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-fifty, and a new departmental total of ninety-one million, six-hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-fifty.
He had a motion, amended motion, and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Alderman Anderson.
The, uh, the reason for this amendment is to, uh, restore forty thousand dollars with the hopes that, uh, we can, um, jump-start the Language Lab at Harborside to bring parity with the other two middle schools.
Any more discussion on the amendment? Alderman Bevan?
Through you, um, Mr. Anderson, uh, what would the new total be, please, on that?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Ninety-one million, six-hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-fifty. An increase of forty thousand dollars.
You all right with there, Alderman Bevan?
Could you please advise me what page that's on, Mr. Anderson?
Page ninety-four. It's account number, through you, Mr. Chairman, it's account number, uh, Education Operations
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We know that, you know, line items mean nothing to the Board of Education budget. You can cut from the bottom line. We only can recommend as to where the cut or the adding additional piece could be used. There's an issue of whether the Board can be funded to the point where it has to have the operations be successful, and that would be in, in, in accounts that would be negligible, as in gas and utilities and whatever. There's no guarantee that that money will be used that way. I would imagine if we do recommend to the Board of Education that it would be, it would be used in that, in that vein. But again, um, if it wasn't used in that vein, it was used other, other ways, um, and it was taken from another count within that, within that, um, within their operating budget, that they would also do so. And if they run short at, at a particular account, um, they will come back to us anyway. So, uh, for those reasons, I, I'm, I'm supportive.
Mr. Chairman.
Alderman Anderson.
I, through you. I appreciate the comments made by Alderman Vitale. What I would, uh, say to you, Ray, and, um, to my colleagues, is that when, um, Dr. Fieser and the Board of Ed came to us last year, and they asked us to, to support the, um, reorganization of schools, um, to reconfigure and redistrict, um, they did so in a way that was, I thought, sensitive to the needs of children and, um, residents. And, uh, this year, um, Dr. Fieser came in with an increase of point-eighty-five percent, less than one percent. And as far as I'm concerned, the, she has been honorable in the way that she's presented this budget, because they made it very clear. She and the Department of Ed made it very clear last year that there would be one-time expenses. And so the budget that they came in with this year reflects those one-time expenses that are reconfigured. And the overall increase is less than one percent. I think the message is very clear, that the forty thousand dollars that I would advocate, and I would hope that you, uh, as colleagues would advocate as well, would be used for this purpose. Thank you.
Alderman Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. I think the idea that Alderman Anderson's presenting is definitely a, a good one. The children of Harborside definitely, you know, deserve the same that the other middle schools do. Uh, the, I mean, the point that Alderman Vitale made about, you know, not being able to specifically take and have the money be allocated for that is a bit of a concern. Is, I mean, is there any way that we could get any type of guarantee that it would be used for that? I guess. That's my question. Thank you.
Thank... Alderman Veccharelli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, uh, I mean, I can understand why the, maybe the Board of Finance, uh, wasn't in favor of this, but the Board of Al, but the Board of Education has, has basically promised us that this money is, is going to be used for a science lab so that there's equal in, in all of the, uh, science labs. So, um, I, I have to say that I would respect that they would do what they, uh, said they would do if we gave them this money. They really want it. They would like to start the science lab this year rather than next year, and then everybody's on the same page. And, um, uh, this one here, I think, is a, um, it's, it's for the kids, it's for the education system, and I think they're being very honest and forthwith with us and telling us that they're going to put this towards a science lab. So, um, I'm gonna support this, and I'm gonna hope that they make the science lab. But I hope everybody else will, uh, will support it, too. I hate to see, uh, you know, them not have it, and then they gotta come back next year. They're gonna get it, but I hope that, you know, we can have it all, and the same for, for all the schools that, you know, that are gonna have it. So I hope that we can support it and make it a non, you know, partisan thing. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Alderman Anderson.
Just wanted to clarify for the record. Often, we talk about STEM for the high schools. In this case, we're talking about, uh, language. Language labs at the middle school level, world language labs at the, at the middle school level. And, um, I hope, again, I hope that this Board will support, um, in the installation of the Language Lab at Harborside. Thank you.
Alderman Golden.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just hate taking away any money from the Board of Education budget. I know that they come in and they're very cognizant of everything that they need, and I always feel like it's taken away from the children. So to see that this other one didn't pass, at least give them forty thousand back so that it may go back to the kids and, uh, give them what they need. So that's my feeling on it.
Alderman Bevan?
Thank you. On Alderman Vitale's request, and other people's requests for this, to go into the, uh, Language Labs, I happened just to look at the Board of Education when it came out, to would they be in favor of that. None of them applied, uh, that they would. They just sat there and looked at me, like you would think that they would go, yeah, we would put it in for, for the Language Lab, but no one responded to that. So it's just, uh, something I noticed that it probably may go into the Language Lab, but they didn't respond favorable that it would go into the Lab. Thank you.
Any more discussion on the amendment? Any more discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, all in favor? Roll call, Madam Secretary, please.
Alderman Anderson? Alderman Beatty? Alderman Bevan? Alderman Beer? Alderman Casey? Alderman Gurman? Alderman Genitazio? Alderman Golden? Alderman Grant? Alderman Hardiman? Alderman Shaw? Alderman Smith? Alderman Veccharelli? Alderman Vitro?
Eight, seven. The amendment passes.
Mr. Chair, for that one, you need a two-thirds majority to pass, so it fails.
Uh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for, uh, clarifying that. Uh, that, we needed a two-thirds vote for that. That motion does fail. Alderman Veccharelli? On the, on the main motion. All in favor? Opposed? Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
On the main motion for the Board of Education, Alderman Anderson.
Yes.
Alderman Beatty? Uh, sure. The original motion is...
You want to read the original motion? Alderman Beatty? Alderman Veccharelli, would you please read the original motion?
The motion is to approve the budget for Account four-nine-nine-six, the Educational Operations, in the amount of ninety-one million, six-hundred-and-eleven-thousand-nine-hundred-and-fifty dollars, as recommended by the Board of Finance for the fiscal year 2016-17.
Thank you, Alderman Veccharelli.
Thank you. Um, Alderman Beatty? Alderman Bevan? Alderman Beer? Alderman Casey? Alderman Gurman? Alderman Genitazio? Alderman Golden? Alderman Grant? Alderman Hardiman? Alderman Shaw? Alderman Smith? Alderman Veccharelli? Alderman Vitro? Twelve, I mean, thirteen.
Thirteen yes, two no. Motion passes. Just to remind the Alderman, we're on page two.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the budgets for the following. Account four-one-four-three, Board of Assessment Appeals, in the amount of ten-thousand-two-hundred. Account four-one-four-four, Zoning Board of Appeals, in the amount of eight-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars. Account four-one-four-five, Pension Board, in the amount of three-thousand-nine-hundred. Account four-one-four-six, Flood and Erosion Board, in the amount of nine-hundred-and-three dollars. Account four-one-four-seven, Tree Commission, in the amount of one-thousand-six-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars. Account four-one-five-one, Civil Service Commission, in the amount of two-hundred dollars. Account four-one-five-three, Parks, Beach, and Recreation Commission, in the amount of one-thousand-one-hundred, uh, um, excuse me, uh, hold on. One-thousand-one-hundred dollars. And Account four-one-five-five, Economic Development Commission, in the amount of two dollars, as recommended by the Board of Finance for the fiscal year 2016-17.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the budgets for the following. Account four-one-five-six, Conservation Commission, in the amount of one-thousand-one-hundred-and-five dollars. Account four-one-five-nine, Veterans Ceremony and Parade Commission, in the amount of five-thousand-six-hundred. Account four-one-six-zero, Housing Code Bird, Board of Appeals, in the amount of four-hundred dollars. Account number four-one-six-one, Musatonic River Estuary Commission, in the amount of zero dollars. And Account four-one-six-two, Open Space, in the amount of fifty-five-thousand-seven-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars, as recommended by the Board of Finance for the fiscal year 2016-17.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Alderman Genitazio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, um, I just would like to bring everyone's attention to Account number four-one-six-two, Open Space, in the amount of fifty-five-thousand-seven-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars. And that is the wages, the budgeted position for the, uh, wages for the open space agent. Um, I know there was some discussion about this last night. We had our budget hearing, and, um, Steve Johnson was before us. I would like to make an amendment to zero out the open space natural resource agent in the amount of fifty-five-thousand-seven-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars, with the understanding that this position be funded by the open space funds, not by the city general fund, not by taxpayer money. That's my formative amendment. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, for a point of order, uh, that's not really, uh, a correct amendment for this here. He can, uh, he's able to, uh, delete this, uh, position here with those funds, but it'll have to be wherever he wants to add that. When we get to the budget, it's that time there that he'll have to add that in. Can't make that now in the form of the motion, because that question is not at hand with
Um, Mr. Chairman, through you. Can we divide the... I'm sorry, can we divide the question? Is that a, uh, proper way of...
That's the proper way.
...zeroing this out? That would be the, um...
You divide the question, you're gonna just, you're just gonna depict one account number, and that happened to be the open space account four-one-six-two.
Correct. Account number four-one-six-two. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
There was, there was a...
Second.
There was a second. There wasn't before. Thank you, Alderman Casey. You heard the amendment? And a second. Is there any discussion? Yeah, Alderman Casey, seconded. Yeah, Alderman Casey, seconded. You're welcome. Wants to zero out that account. Any more discussion on the amendment? Alderman Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I just want to just clarify. At this point, looking to remove the position and then later on, when we get to a different line item, we're going to be looking to re-add his position to be funded by Grant. So, I mean, but as of right now, we're just voting to completely eliminate Steve Johnson's position.
Alderman Genotasio, that's what you had in mind, correct?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Alderman Grant. Yes, we must first delete the position before we can fund it through the open space account. That is correct.
Mr., I'm sorry, Ms...
Alderman Shaw.
Um, before we go too far down here, let's be very clear about how this will be funded. The way this works is, as it did in the past, Steve Johnson would have to first go to the Planning and Zoning Board and get approval for those funds. Then, after they're approved by the Planning and Zoning Board, they have to come to this board to be approved. There's no place in the budget, and you'll correct me if I'm wrong, there's no place in the budget for this to be added in. Once it's out of the budget, it is out of the budget.
Mr. Chair, through you, in response to Alderman Shaw, that is correct. In order to do any type of budget memo transfers, which this would be, it would have to go through the process. Because this takes from a budget line item, a reserve fund, that has to be approved by the Planning and Zoning Board, we'd need their permission, approval. We would also need the approval of the Parks, Beach and Recs Commission. We'd also need the approval of the Chair, of the City... We'd also need the approval of the DPW Director and the Mayor's Office, and then it would go to the Board of Aldermen. However, there has to be a noticed meeting of the Board of Aldermen in order to deliberate and vote on this. It'd have to be properly noticed. This has not been, this is not part of the normal budget operations discussion, so it would be a separate set of meetings altogether.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Chairman, as a point of information for the board, I'd like to remind everyone that the Fund Forty Open Space account that is being considered is close to zero now because we use that money to purchase 701 North Street. So there, I'd be uncomfortable approving tonight adding him back into that fund. I know we don't have P&amp;Z approval, that's another roadblock. But there is virtually no money left in that account right now, and it'll take time. It may not be this fiscal year before that account gets back up to a balance that could support his salary. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter, for bringing that, bringing that important note out.
If I could just respond, Mr. Chairman, through you.
Alderman Genotasio.
So the process has been laid out. Again, it's doable. It would have to be deleted at this point, and to move forward, it would be on a regular agenda item on the Board of Aldermen with an approval from Planning and Zoning, DPLU, Parks Rec, and I'm sure that everyone is going to be on board to promote and to continue Steve Johnson's position. It's just a funding mechanism, and to the Finance Director's point, it's not going to happen tonight, so I'm not too concerned about the balance in the open space account. I know that it's got to go through the process. But once it does get through the process, I'm positive that there'll be funds available to pay for it. This is how this job was originally funded, so I just want to be clear. I'd rather fund it in that fashion than taxpayer money. I was opposed to this the last budget cycle, and this is why I'm making the amendment now. And it has nothing to do with Steve Johnson. I think he's doing a great job, and regardless of how he's getting paid, I'm sure he's going to continue to do a great job. So I would like to move the amendment forward. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Alderman Anderson.
Two things, quick points. With an incumbent in the job, without a discussion with that incumbent or with the Personnel Director, I would be loath to want to make any changes, I think, just in general. But if, if we agree that we have a terrific individual serving the city of Milford, serving the residents in that capacity, he'd have to question whether he has the full support of this board in carrying out his duties and responsibilities. And any human being would question it. So that's one thing I would say. The other is, if we're going to debate the elimination of this job, or the way that it was created, or the fact that it's on the municipal budget, it just kind of reminds me of the debate in Congress over the Affordable Care Act. How many times does the Affordable Care Act have to be debated? Forty-five, fifty, fifty-five times? And it, and it's been defeated ever since. So I say we were, we're very fortunate to have an incumbent in this position like Steve, and Steve deserves our full support.
Alderman Veccharelli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We, uh, we certainly do need, need a person for our open space to, um, do all that he does for us, which is quite a bit. Not only does he do all that, but, you know, he's even a nice guy, too. But, um, the amount of money in grants that this man has brought to the city of Milford is, is just unbelievable. I, I think just this year, he's brought us over a million dollars in grant money, free money, that we've got to help us. And every year, this guy comes up with more and more and more money that we never had before. We never had an open space guy like this before, and now he manages it, and he does a, what a job he does with volunteers to clean the areas up that we have. It's just phenomenal. We're lucky to have this guy. And, and not only is he, does such a service for the city of Milford, but the guy brings in all this money. I mean, I, I've never, he's, it's the cash cow, and I'm certainly happy we got him, and I don't want to lose him, especially all the money that he helps us get in these grants. It's just phenomenal. So, you know, I'm supporting this guy.
Any more discussion on the amendment? Alderman Genotasio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just would like to make the point that we all agree that Steve Johnson is doing a great job, and we want him to continue to do a great job. And he first and foremost knew, when he first took the job, how it was being funded, so I don't see why he would be concerned. In fact, that job came out of the Mayor's account, and it was a seasonal temp. Right now, since it's been added to the city budget, it's become a permanent position with benefits. And I feel that it should go back to what it was before and not encumber taxpayer dollars. And to Mayor Blake's point earlier in the deliberations about, my point was, we continue to add positions. This was a significant add. There's no way around it. There was no, um, people that were, no positions that weren't filled. This was a position that was created solely by my colleagues on the other side that felt it would be best suited to have taxpayer dollars pay for it, rather than continue to be funded through open space. So that's really where the disagreement is. I mean, I agree with everything, mostly everything, that Alderman Veccharelli said as far as realizing grants and the money that Steve Johnson brought in. I'm not debating that. It's just, I feel the principle, it should be funded the way it was intended to be funded, and I think it was a benefit to the taxpayers that it was funded in that fashion. I don't think it should have been created as a city position, nonetheless, a city department. So that's my, my thoughts. Thank you.
Any more discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed?
No.
Roll call, vote. Madam Secretary.
Alderman Anderson?
No.
Alderman Beatty? No, that was a no. Alderman Bevan? Alderman Beer? Alderman Casey?
Yes.
Alderman Gurman? Alderman Genotasio?
Yes.
Alderman Golden? Alderman Grant?
No.
Alderman Hardiman? I'm sorry. Alderman Shaw? Alderman Smith, Smith? Alderman Veccharelli? Alderman Vitro?
No.
Alderman Vitale?
It's a motion to reconsider.
No, he can just change his vote. Just change...
I'm sorry. So you're changing Alderman Hardiman from yes to no? Correct.
Eleven no, four yes. Motion fails. On the original motion. That's just the one, just the open space. On the original motion. Any more discussion on the original motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Roll call, vote. Madam Secretary, please.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Beatty? Alderman Bevan? Alderman Beer? Alderman Casey?
Yes.
Alderman Gurman? Alderman Genotasio?
No.
Alderman Golden? Alderman Grant?
Yes.
Alderman Hardiman? Alderman Shaw? Alderman Smith? Alderman Veccharelli? Alderman Vitro?
Yes.
Alderman Vitale?
Eleven yes, four no. Mass, the motion passes. Now we're on the original motion. That was on the open space motion. Now we're on the original motion. We're going to vote on those four, other than the open space account. You want to read them all again? Read them all again.
Mr. Chairman, after the question was divided, we've taken care of account number 4162, the open space. We now have left account number 4156, the Conservation Commission. Uh, account 4159, the Veterans Ceremony Parade Commission. Account 4160, Housing Code Board of Appeals. And account 4161, the Housatonic River Estuary. So we will be voting for those four accounts now.
Correct. Thank you, Alderman Veccharelli. Any discussion on those accounts? On the original motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the budget, uh, for account 4193, the Public Library, in the amount of one million, ninety-three thousand and two dollars, as recommended by the Board of Finance for the fiscal year 2016-17.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the budget for account 4210, Finance Department, in the amount of one million, seven hundred and sixty-one thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars, as, as recommended by the Board of Finance for the fiscal year 2016-17.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the budget for account number 4215, Management Information Systems, in the amount of seven hundred and fifty-one thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars, as recommended by the Board of Finance for the fiscal year 2016-17.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the budget for account 4219, Human Resources, in the amount of two hundred and ten thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars, as recommended by the Board of Finance for the fiscal year 2016-17.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the budget for account 4310, Police Department, as recommended by the Board of Finance, with the following technical changes. Increase account 4112-9943, Overtime Park, by five thousand dollars to ten thousand dollars, for a new subtotal of ten million, eight hundred and ninety-six thousand, one hundred and seventy-four dollars. And decrease account 4796-0000, Software Maintenance, by thirty thousand to two hundred and thirty-five thousand, for a subtotal of five hundred and ninety-six thousand and eight hundred and forty-four dollars, and a new department total for twelve million, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Alderman Casey.
Thank you. I guess through you two, whoever made the changes, what's the change for the software maintenance decrease?
These were the changes that Chief Mello came and made before this board. These were the adjustments that he said he needed. Again, it's a twenty-five thousand dollar decrease. One of the, I believe, you can look back in the notes, but the, the recommendation was for a decrease in that software account line item because we were going to be able to have it covered for the next year, and the increase wouldn't go into effect for another year.
Any more discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the budget for account 4320, Fire Department, in the amount of eleven million, two hundred and eighty-four thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars, as recommended by the Board of Finance for the fiscal year 2016-17.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the budget for account 4331, Civil Preparedness, in the amount of one hundred and four thousand, one hundred and fifty-three dollars, as recommended by the Board of Finance for the fiscal year 2016-17.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the budget for account 4340, Animal Control, in the amount of three hundred and twenty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars, as recommended by the Board of Finance for the fiscal year 2016-17.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the budget for account 4360, Light, Lighting ... Lighting Hydrants Water, in the amount of $1,906,000, as recommended by the Board of Finance for the fiscal year 2016-17.
Motion has been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alden Veccharelli.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the budgets for the following. Account 4420, Public Works Office, in the amount of $352,193, and account number 4421, The Highway Parks, in the amount of $2,586,076, as recommended by the Board of Finance for the fiscal year 2016-17.
Motion has been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Alden Gurman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. This account includes the new position that Director Salee was asking for, and he's looking to fund it by eliminating a couple of the positions. And I'm in favor of that, I think it's a better use of funds for the Public Works Department, knowing the condition he's in. I am on the Public Works Committee as well, so I see or hear a lot of the, you know, what needs to happen in that division. So by reducing a couple of the positions and reallocating funds to this new position, I agree with. However, I disagree with how it's being funded. I'd rather see it, or I'd like to make amendment, to have it a non-union rep position, instead of a union rep. So I'd like to make that a motion, if I can.
Do I hear a second? We have an amendment, motion, and a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Roll call vote, Madam Secretary.
Chairman?
Alden Anderson?
Call a five-minute recess.
We're now back in session. Alden Gurman, would you like to repeat that amended motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, through you, I'd like to make an amendment to keep the additional position that was added by Mr. Salee, but make it a non-union representative position. Thank you.
Is there any discussion on the amendment? Alden Beer?
I understand what Alden Gurman is saying, and I'm in agreement with what he's saying, but I don't see the language of whether it's union, non-union. Is this something we just vote on, and then we create this position? We'll just make it a non-union? I don't know if that goes to the mayor?
Mr. Chair, through you. There is a designation within the budget books. This particular position, it is found on page 64. If you look at where it says Superintendent of Public Works, there is a grade step. That would be eliminated in non-rep, similar to the Public Works Director would be supplanted in its place.
Any more discussion on the amended motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Madam Secretary, roll call vote, please.
Alden Anderson?
No.
Alden Beatty? Alden Bevan? Alden Beer?
Yes.
Alden Casey?
No.
Alden Gurman?
Yes.
Alden Genotasio?
No.
Alden Golden?
Yes.
Alden Grant?
Yes.
Alden Hardiman?
Yes.
Alden Shaw? Alden Smith?
No.
Alden Veccharelli?
Yes.
Alden Vitro?
Yes.
Alden Vitale?
Mr. Mayor, that's not a supermajority vote, it's just a simple majority, correct? Thank you. What is the count, Madam Secretary?
Eight yes, nine, excuse me, eight yes, seven no.
Eight yes, seven no. Motion passes. Alden Veccharelli?
Are we gonna vote on the original?
On the original motion?
Yeah, for the two accounts.
Yes. Any discussion on the original motion? Seeing none, all in favor? Oh, Alden Genotasio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just would like to speak to the position, I'm not in favor of it. And the reason is, as all the board members know, we've bonded quite about, quite a big amount of money into this department, most recently with the transition, with the newer technology, and the equipment, and the trucks, and the towders. And we even replaced some of the rear-end loader trucks that pick up the garbage at the schools. That was the first thing that Director Salee wanted to transition. I don't even believe we've received delivery on that truck yet, but I'm sure eventually, in time, all these trucks will show up. My issue is, you know, Director Salee has good ideas, good intentions, and a vision. But along the way, when he was before us, and he was asking for all of these upgrades, he never once indicated or alluded to the fact that he would need additional help. His pitch was always, well, you know, we're gonna get the cost savings and the payback, because through attrition, we're not going to be hiring, rehiring, or replacing workers when they retire. And furthermore, we're not gonna need three people on a truck, it's gonna be reduced to one person. So, you know, I bought into that, and I know that people have needs, and, you know, I own a business, and would I like more supervision? Yeah, of course, I mean, but, you know, I wear several hats, like many of you do, on this board. And, you know, that's a luxury item. And I feel if people are gonna be retiring, and we're gonna have less personnel, then eventually, it's less people to supervise. And the nature of the solid waste department in general is a route. And in my business, I run trucks, I hire drivers, and I dispatch routes. And when you have competent people working in your department, and they know their route, they come in in the morning, you know, before I even get there, and they're already in that truck, and they begin their routes. And with the technology, with cameras and GPSs, I think it's really, would be supervised through technology. So I don't see the need to create another position. And again, I don't wanna sound redundant, but I just feel that the trash will still be picked up, the services will be met. And I truly think that the taxpayers out there, and I speak for all taxpayers, I speak for Democrats, I speak for Republicans, independents. I mean, I don't wanna be biased. I mean, I'm sure we all are elected, you know, with the responsibility to the taxpayer, first and foremost. So when I see the state laying off workers, and the fiscal crisis that's going on there, and we're not really sure how much money we're gonna get, you know, it raises some valid concerns. So I'm reluctant to add positions into the budget, and this is one of them. I think that Chris Salee, you know, could handle this transition, and I'm sure the people that are working down there in the department are competent people, and I have faith in them. So I can't support this, thank you.
Any more discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Roll call vote, Madam Secretary.
Alden Anderson?
Yes.
Alden Beatty? Alden Bevan? Alden Beer? Alden Casey?
No.
Alden Gurman? Alden Genotasio?
No.
Alden Golden? Alden Grant?
Yes.
Alden Hardiman? Alden Shaw? Alden Smith? Alden Veccharelli? Alden Vitro?
Yes.
Alden Vitale?
Eleven yes, four no. Motion passes. Alden Veccharelli.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the budget for account 4423, Building Maintenance, in the amount of $3,48,807, as recommended by the Board of Finance for the fiscal year 2016-17, with the following technical changes. Correct account 4923-0502, Roof Repairs, to read as follows. Account 4923-0501, West Shore Roof. Correct account 4971-0402, Van, to read as follows. Accounts 4923-0502, Roof Repairs.
Motion has been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Alden Bevan?
Through you, I believe that this was just a typo in our original budget?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any more discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alden Veccharelli.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the budgets for the following. Accounts 4424, Engineering, in the amount of $358,866. Account 4429, General Garage, in the amount of $1,364,068. And account number 4431, Solid Waste, in the amount of $4435,129, as recommended by the Board of Finance for the fiscal year of 2016-17.
Motion has been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Alden Grant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Director Salee's been highlighting recently all the efficiencies that he's gonna be taking in doing through the city as far as trash pickup. And he's also been highlighting the additional recycling that he's planning on doing for Milford throughout the year, which is gonna be reducing amount of trash that we need to pick up. Additionally, we just hired a new superintendent, five minutes ago, to take in, help with these efficiencies, and help take in, reduce the amount of trash, and increase recycling. So I would actually like to make a motion to decrease account 4790-9950, City Waste Removal Costs, by 2%, which is a total of $40,000. That would bring the total to $1,960,000, for a subtotal of $2461,089, for total department.
We had an amendment, motion, and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, through you, to Alden Grant, would you just say the line, the line number again, please?
Yes, it's line item 4790-9950. It's on page... Seventy-six. It's under the 4431, Solid Waste.
Mr. Chair, through you, to Alden Grant. As you see, we actually did reduce this line item by approximately $100,000 from the previous year's budget. An additional $40,000 reduction. It would make it very tight. It would be something that I think that the Public Works Office, it would make it tight, but I'm not saying it's out of the question, especially given the efficiencies that they've been advocating for, and the direction that they're moving.
Alden Gurman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. If you look at the numbers here, for the first half of 2015-16, it looks like a total of $638,000, which is far lower than the, you know, if you double that, far lower than the $2 million. So I think that's a reasonable request for Alden Grant, so, if that makes sense.
Any more discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed?
No.
Roll call vote, Madam Secretary, please.
Alden Anderson?
Yes.
Alden Beatty? Alden Bevan? Alden Beer?
Yes.
Alden Casey?
Yes.
Alden Gurman? Alden Genotasio?
Yes.
Alden Golden? Alden Grant?
Yes.
Alden Hardiman? Alden Shaw? Alden Smith? Alden Veccharelli? Alden Vitro?
No.
Alden Vitale?
Eleven yes, four no. The amendment passes. Alden Veccharelli.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, would you kindly repeat, was the reduction $40,000? Thank you.
You're welcome. You need time, Peter, for that?
I got, I have it, thank you.
You're welcome. On the main motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alden Veccharelli.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the budget for accounts 4503, The Public Debt Service, as recommended by the Board of Finance for fiscal year 2016-17, with the following technical changes. Decrease account 4611-9909, Bond Principal, General by $64,000 to $3,338,500. Second decrease account 4611-9937, Bond Principal, Sewer, by $297,000 to $2,768,500. Three, increase account 4612-9909, Bond Interest, General, by $27,250 Four, increase account 4612-9937, Bond Interest, Sewer, by $32,478 to $1,704,239. For a new subtotal and department total of $10,120,454.
We have a motion and a second, is there any... Is there any discussion? Alderman Beer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to either Mayor or Peter. What are these changes for? Are these recommended by?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, Alderman Beer. These changes are directly related to the recent bond refunding that we did. They are the result of the savings from that refunding.
Alderman Germain?
Mr. Chairman, through you, just a follow-up on that. When was that done? That bond refunded?
We worked on it in February and it settled in early March of 2016.
So, one more follow-up. Why wasn't that in the budget? When we?
It was not in the Board of Finance budget because I had to wait for the revised amortization tables and it took me time to rework the fees debt that was refunded and canceled to take those items out and then incorporate the refunding issue. So, it, it was a bit of a time-consuming process and once I had those numbers, it was ready for the Board of Alderman phase. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccherelli.
I make a motion to approve the budget for account 46110. Health Department in the amount of $873,282, uh, $282. And that's like a typo here. Do we have a clarification on that?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. It's the, it's $873,825.
Thank you, Peter. $1,825. Scratch the two.
For the Health Department in the amount of $873,825. As recommended by the Board of Finance for the fiscal year 2016-17.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccherelli.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the budget for account 4620. Recreation Department in the amount of $819,279. As recommended by the Board of Finance for the fiscal year 2016-17.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccherelli.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the budget for account 4710. Employee benefits in the amount of $22,684,177. As recommended by the Board of Finance for fiscal year 2006-17. 2016-17.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccherelli.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the budgets for the following. Account 4720. Insurance and bonds. In the amount of $2,298,708. Account 4740. Claims and refunds in the amount of $640,000. As recommended by the Board of Finance for the fiscal year 2016-17.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccherelli.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the budget for account 4790. Benefits and salary reserve. In the amount of $1,070,000. As recommended by the Board of Finance for the fiscal year 2016-17.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccherelli.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the budget for account 4799. Unallocated contingency. In the amount of $25,000. As recommended by the Board of Finance for the fiscal year 2016-17.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Alderman Beer?
Mr. Chairman, through you. Is it possible to go back to a previous department? If I have a question on it? I'm not asked the question. Benefits and salary reserve, I'm just not sure what this account is. And I'm just looking at, last year it was $425,000. And then this year it's a million. More than doubled, so I'm just not sure what this account is.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. This account historically has been the account to set aside the amount needed to fund the wage increases for the city employees. And when contracts are not ratified yet, we have to set aside each fiscal year a certain amount in anticipation of those wages being paid out at some point in the future, which are retroactive wage adjustments. Thank you.
Alderman Veccherelli.
I made a motion. You want me to read it again?
Although, I'm sorry. We had a motion and it was seconded. On the unallocated contingency. In amount of $25,000. Is there any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. In the, in the future, Alderman Beer, let, let's get one, one account done and then bring it up. We were in the middle, we're in the middle of voting, voting.
Yeah, I understand. I just, it was a discussion period, so I just thought I would take it up during the discussion period, but I will let.
Thank you. Alderman Veccherelli.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the budgets for the following. Account 4801. Council on Aging in the amount of $1,371,298. And account number 4803. The Fine Arts Council. In the amount of $67,500. As recommended by the Board of Finance for the fiscal year 2016-17.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Alderman Anderson?
Minor technical matter. They're no longer referred to as Fine Arts Council. It's Milford Arts Council. So, it should be so noted in the budget. Thank you.
We calling it MAC. Thank you, Alderman Anderson.
Mr. Chairman, if, would Alderman Anderson just repeat the correct title for me, please? Thank you.
Milford Arts Council. Or MAC for short.
All right. We had a motion and a second. There is no more discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccherelli.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the budget for account 4805. CMed. In the amount of $71,613. As recommended by the Board of Finance for the fiscal year 2016-17.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccherelli.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the budgets for the following. Account 4807. Regional Mental Health Board in the amount of $2,996. Account 4811. The Borough of Woodmont in the amount of $230,000. Account 4812. Transit Authority in the amount of $345,242. Account 4813. Bridges Community Support in the amount of $350,000. Account 4815. Veterans Graves in the amount of $2,850. And account 4816. Milford Flotella 73. In the amount of $10,000. As recommended by the Board of Finance for the fiscal year 2016-17.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Alderman Shaw?
Thank you, Chairman Vitro. I'd like to make a motion to add $10,000 to account 4813. Bridges Community Support. Bringing the total amount to $360,000.
Amendment motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Roll call vote. Madam Secretary.
Alderman Anderson?
No.
Alderman Beatty? Alderman Bevan? Alderman Beer?
No.
Alderman Casey?
No.
Alderman Germain? Alderman Genotasio?
No.
Alderman Golden? Alderman Grant?
Yes.
Alderman Hardiman? Alderman Shaw? Alderman Smith? Alderman Veccherelli? Alderman Vitro?
Yes.
Alderman Vitale?
Yes.
Twelve yes, three no.
Twelve yes. Nine yes. Six no. The motion, the, I'm sorry, the amendment fails. The, on the main motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccherelli.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Can you give me the final count again for Bridges? 4813 for the amendment?
The secretary said nine yes, six, six no. Alderman Veccherelli.
I make a motion to approve the budget for account 4817. Human Services Department in the amount of $490,000. As recommended by the Board of Finance for the fiscal year 2016-17.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccherelli.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the budgets for the following. Account 4818. Historic District in the amount of $650. Account 4819. Milford Progress. In the amount of $10,000. Account 4820. Milford Historic District 2 in the amount of $650. Account 4821. Health Services, the Visiting Nurse Association. In the amount of $20,000. Account 4822. Cemetery Association in the amount of $9,250. As recommended by the Board of Finance for the fiscal year 2016-17.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccherelli.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the budgets for the following. Account 4825. Bethel Shelter. In the amount of $80,000. Account 4826. Boys and Girls Club. In the amount of $70,000. As recommended by the Board of Finance for the fiscal year 2016-17.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Alderman Bevan?
Thank you. On the account number 4825. Bethel Shelter. I believe when they had, did their presentation to us, she corrected me once that is Bethel Center, not Shelter. Whether or not that is true, but she did bring it to my attention when she sat in front of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Bevan. You're correct. It is Bethel Center. Duly noted. Any more discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccherelli.
I make a motion to add a new account. Literacy Volunteers of Southern Connecticut. In the amount of $3,500. For the fiscal year of 2016-17.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Roll call vote. Madam Secretary, please.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Beatty? Alderman Bevan? Alderman Beer? Alderman Casey?
No.
Alderman Germain? Alderman Genotasio?
No.
Alderman Golden? Alderman Grant?
Yes.
Alderman Hardiman? Alderman Hardiman? Alderman Shaw? Alderman Smith? Alderman Veccherelli? Alderman Vitro? Alderman Vitale?
Nine yes, six no. We need two-thirds, which is 10. The motion fails. Alderman Veccherelli.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the budget for account 4992. Private school textbooks. In the amount of $20,000. As recommended by the Board of Finance for the fiscal year 2016-17.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Alderman Bevan?
Thank you. Through you on the private school textbooks. It's at $20,000. And I believe we were told that this goes to the existing private schools that we have in Milford, which were three, and now we're down to one. But the amount stays the same. So, I'm looking to decrease number 0010-4992. Private school textbooks by $10,000. Making the new total $10,000.
Amended motion was made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Mayor?
This line item has been unaltered really for the past 10 years. It has not gone up. It has stayed flat despite the fact that the cost of textbooks have risen significantly over the course of the last decade. This item has stayed flat. Even though there has been a reduction in the number of private schools in Milford, the number of private school students have arguably remained relatively the same. They did an assessment after St. Anne's closed and the numbers were approximately the same as when there were the three. St. Anne's, St. Mary's, and St. Gabe's. We're still assessing what will happen when St. Gabe's close. You heard from the Board of Education, we're in a wait and see till next year. I would just urge that you not make an adjustment on this until at least another year when we have a better sense. But again, this is, this is a relatively small amount that's being requested in the grand scheme of the 200-plus million dollar budget. I would suggest that you hold it because there has not been any increases over the course of the last decade. of the last decade.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any more discussion on the motion? Alderman Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the mayor, I'd just like to ask if, after the reassessment's done, when St. Gabe's closes, if not all the money is used, it will go back to the general fund?
All the money that is not requested does go back to the general fund, yes.
Thank you.
Any more discussion on the, Alderman Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, I understand Alderman Bevan's point on this. We keep talking about decreasing enrollments. We talk about closing private schools, parochial schools, but perhaps I could appeal to the minority's position on school choice and the fact that private schools take up some of the slack that, despite the fact that many of these parents send their children to private schools, they're still paying municipal taxes and therefore are entitled in some cases to some of that cost sharing, the same way they pay taxes into the public schools. This private textbook account helps to defer some of those expenses a bit and shows the public support of private schools, which I'm sure many of you support. I think, as the mayor pointed out, as things go along, this particular account will probably dwindle and go away, but for now, given the fact that it has remained the same and in light of the fact there has been no formal closings of some of the private schools, I agree with the mayor that perhaps this account should remain untouched at least this budget session. Thank you.
Any more discussion on the amendment motion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Roll call vote. Madam Secretary, please.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Beatty?
Yes.
Alderman Bevan?
No.
Alderman Beer?
No.
Alderman Casey?
Yes.
Alderman Germain?
No.
Alderman Genitazio?
Yes.
Alderman Golden?
Yes.
Alderman Grant?
No.
Alderman Hardiman?
No.
Alderman Shaw?
No.
Alderman Smith?
No.
Alderman Veccharelli?
No.
Alderman Vitale?
No.
Alderman Vitale?
Yes.
Seven yes, eight no. Motion, the amendment motion fails. On the original motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call vote. Madam Secretary, please.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Beatty?
No.
Alderman Bevan?
No.
Alderman Beer?
Yes.
Alderman Casey?
Yes.
Alderman Germain?
Yes.
Alderman Genitazio?
Yes.
Alderman Golden?
Yes.
Alderman Grant?
Yes.
Alderman Hardiman?
Yes.
Alderman Shaw?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Veccharelli?
Yes.
Alderman Vitale?
Yes.
Fourteen yes, one no.
Fourteen yes, one no. Motion passes. Alderman Veccharelli.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to add a new account 0010-4828 Milford Historic Preservation Commission in the amount of $650 for the fiscal year of 2016-17.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Alderman Anderson.
Just wanted to comment that this brings parity to the new commission, Historic Preservation Commission. The same with all of the other boards and commissions that the city has to provide clerical services. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Anderson. Any more discussion on the motion? Alderman Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to reiterate Alderman Anderson's point, this is the new Preservation Commission that we established by ordinance last year. The $650, as he mentioned, is the same as Historic Districts 1 and 2 and helps to offset some of the expenses that are incurred by this organization, which has already in the past year done a wonderful job of inventorying a lot of the Milford Historic Sites and structures throughout town. Remember, these are for the historic sites outside of the Historic District 1 and 2, which is what we established this particular, this particular granite agency last year. And I, the $650 again is really just for stationary, normal clerical needs the same way as Historic District 1 and 2. Thank you.
Any more discussion on the motion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Roll call vote. Madam Secretary, please.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Beatty?
Yes.
Alderman Bevan?
Yes.
Alderman Beer?
Yes.
Alderman Casey?
No.
Alderman Germain?
No.
Alderman Genitazio?
No.
Alderman Golden?
Yes.
Alderman Grant?
Yes.
Alderman Hardiman?
Yes.
Alderman Shaw?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Veccharelli?
Yes.
Alderman Vitale?
No.
Twelve yes, three no.
Twelve yes, three no. Motion passes. Alderman Veccharelli.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the budget for account 4993 Education Audit Fees in the amount of $22,300 as recommended by the Board of Finance for the fiscal year 2016-17.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the budget for account 4994 School Debt as recommended by the Board of Finance for the fiscal year 2016-17 with the following technical changes. Decrease account 4611-9928 Bond Principal Schools by $144,000 to $2,988,000. Increase account 4612-9928 Bond Interest Schools by $17,353 to $1,606,454 for a new subtotal and department total of $4,594,454.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the budget for account 4995 Employee Benefits Non Teaching in the amount of $1,226,770 as recommended by the Board of Finance for the fiscal year 2016-17.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the budget for account 4997 Education Health Insurance Contribution in the amount of $18,917,205 as recommended by the Board of Finance for the fiscal year 2016-17.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the budget for account 4998 Education Health Services School Nurses in the amount of $1,387,194 as recommended by the Board of Finance for the fiscal year 2016-17.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve account 4154 Sewer Commission in the amount of $1,699,898 as recommended by the Board of Finance for the fiscal year 2016-17.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the budget for account 4426 Wastewater in the amount of $6,419,341 as recommended by the Board of Finance for the fiscal year 2016-17.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the budget for account 4790 Benefits and Salary Reserve in the amount of $58,283 as recommended by the Board of Finance for the fiscal year 2016-17.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the revenue expenditures for account 0012-0000 Sewer Fund in the amount of $8,177,522 as recommended by the Board of Finance for the fiscal year 2016-17.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve expenditures and revenue for account 0036-4157 Harbor Management Commission in the amount of $289,426 as recommended by the Finance Board for the fiscal year 2016-17.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve expenditures and revenue for account 0018-4121 Golf Course in the amount of $82,333 as recommended by the Board of Finance for the fiscal year 2016-17.
The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve account 0010-0000 The General Fund Reserve as recommended by the Board of Finance for fiscal year 2016-17 with the following technical changes. Decrease account 3516-0000 Transportation by $95,189 to zero. Decrease account 3517-0000 Education Cost Sharing by $145,750 to $11,231,850 for a new subtotal of $11,434,35,793. Decrease account 3643-0000 State Realty by $1,529 to $195,96. Decrease account 3643-0001 State Realty Pequod by $990 to $380,756. Decrease account 3674-0000 Private Exemptions by $3,291 to $419,820 for a new subtotal of $1,570,475. Decrease 3658-0000 Property Tax Relief Municipal Revenue Share by $819,170 to $1,880,830 for a new subtotal of $1,975,832. Let me, let me repeat that. $1,975,830. Increase account 3901-0000 Appropriated Fund Balance by $500,000 to $3,500,000 for a new subtotal of $3,500,000. Finally, the Finance Director will provide a final revenue total once current taxes and account 3111-0000 is calculated.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Alderman Anderson.
For the record, private exemptions is account 3647-0000. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Anderson. Yeah, I just skipped a number. Any, any more discussion? Alderman Bevan.
Thank you. It says finally the Finance Director will provide a final revenue total. Will that be this evening?
Through you, Mr. Chair, yes.
Thank you very much.
Alderman Germain.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the mayor. Where did you come up with some of these numbers, especially 3658-0000? These were the state numbers?
These are the numbers that we got from the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities. These are the numbers that we verified with the Office of Policy and Management and the Office of Fiscal Analysis and members of our legislative delegation as those numbers that will likely be approved by both the Senate and the House. Again, these are the same numbers or same places that other municipalities in the area have just approved over the course of the last week, their budgets. As we mentioned last night, if the General Assembly approves numbers different than this, we will have to adjust perhaps or absorb some of those costs. However, we have a high rate of probability that these numbers that are coming from the state are the numbers that will be approved.
Just to follow up, Mr. Chairman. So, but at this point, there's no concrete numbers, and they're voting, I guess tomorrow, as they're making their final decision at the state level. And you want us to vote on, that could be much greater. So, yeah, I'm just concerned with that, without having the concrete numbers.
Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Germain, I can understand that trepidation. Any given fiscal year, even mid-year, the state can come back and adjust the numbers, adjust the grants. They did it this year. So, we are never fully protected. We never, without any 100% accuracy, know what the state is going to give us even after the General Assembly approves a budget and the governor signs it into law because they make a because they make amendments and adjustments throughout the course of, uh, a fiscal year. But again, we're going on the probability, going on the numbers that, uh, some of those state agencies that we have to rely upon, uh, these are the, the facts that they are, again, recommending to us.
Just one other follow-up question, Mr. Chairman. And can you also explain account number nine, uh, 3901000?
Mr. Chair, that is the appropriated fund balance which we borrow from almost every year. This is the same amount that, uh, we borrowed from last year, uh, and it is the amount that under the Mayor's budget was the amount that was recommended. Uh, in any given year, we do operate in the black by about that much, so it's usually a wash. So, we borrow from the previous year and pay it back the following year. Sometimes we pay back more. In recent years, we've paid back up to $5 million. It's part of the prudent budgeting process that we've adopted, at least since I've been Mayor in the eight years that I served on the Board of Aldermen.
So, just a follow-up, Mr. Chairman. So, you would say with that, that's our rainy day fund that we're taking roughly, um, 3.5 million or 4 million out of?
No, 3.5, 3.5.
Thank you.
Any more discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, just one indulgence. I know that we're going to have to stand in recess as Peter calculates, uh, the final figures, but, uh, if this board, uh, does approve this final resolution, uh, we will have a tax cut for the fiscal year 2016-2017. That is historic. Within the last 25 years, there's only been one other instance where the City of Milford has had a tax cut. Again, historic, and I give all of you Aldermen who have put in so much time, starting with Alderman Bevan, going around the horn to Alderman Anderson, uh, the nu, long nights, including tonight, it's past 11 o'clock already, and I know that we're going to continue on for a little bit longer, but you have put in time to meet with the department heads, not just during these budget meetings, but I know that in your personal time, you've made phone calls and scheduled meetings to make sure that the City of Milford does continue to have the best services available. And this budget certainly does demonstrate that we have the taxpayers', uh, thoughts in our mind because, again, this is going to be a tax cut. If this resolution is approved, um, we will be paying less in taxes for next year than we did the previous year, and that's something we always strive for. So, again, well done. Nice job to all of you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Also, I'd like to send that, uh, thank you to yourself and the Board of Finance for everything they had to do with keeping the budget the way it is. And like you had mentioned, we might be looking at a, um, the first time in a long, long time that we've had a deduction in our taxes. But I know you had something to do it, and I know the Board of Finance certainly has something to do with it. So, I want to thank everyone that had participated, including our Finance Director for all his, uh, so we got to vote on this. Thank you, Peter. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, um, before we close this out, I, I want to ask if we can, if I can do a motion to reconsider item, count number 4813, Bridges. It's on page six, towards the top. I had made an amendment to increase by 10,000, bringing the amount to three, 360,000. I'm asking for a reconsideration.
Can you repeat that, please?
I'm sorry, what do you, you want me to repeat the motion? Okay, originally, asset move, uh, to add $10,000 to account 4813, Bridges Community Support in the amount of 350,000, bringing the total to 360,000. And again, for those who still can't find it, it's on page six.
I need a little clarification on that, Mr. Mayor. Uh, we, we, because we've already voted on it and, uh, it, it was denied, um, how do we go from here?
Mr. Chair, I'm just going to read, uh, rule number 11 in the Board of Aldermen Rules. When a motion has been carried in either the affirmative or the negative, it shall be in order for any member who voted with the majority to move a reconsideration thereof at the same meeting or at the next meeting, provided no question can be twice reconsidered, nor can a vote which has caused an action that cannot be reversed be reconsidered. So, uh, given that, uh, it would be, in your opinion, whether it would be, uh, well-taken, and it seems to be consistent with the rules.
Uh, Alderman Shaw, did you?
So, we're just voting on the reconsideration, right? I'm asking for a reconsideration of the vote, right?
Alderman Shaw, did you vote, uh, a yes on that amendment?
Yes, I did.
Yeah, could you have a, uh, roll call vote, Madam Secretary, on that motion?
Can, I can read you the vote on the amendment made by, um, Alderman Shaw to add 10,000 to the Bridges budget. Alderman Anderson voted no. Alderman Beatty voted yes. Alderman Bevan voted no. Alderman Beer voted no. Alderman Casey voted no. Alderman Germain voted no. Alderman Genotasio voted no. Alderman Gold, Golden voted yes. Alderman Grant voted yes. Alderman Hardiman voted yes. Alderman Shaw voted yes. Alderman Smith voted yes. Alderman Vecarelli voted yes. Alderman Vitro voted yes. And Alderman Vitale voted yes. It failed.
Thank you, Madam Second Secretary. And it failed because it didn't have the two-thirds vote, correct? Thank you again.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm just asking for a reconsideration, not a, a new tally. Uh, okay.
Yet that's, you're putting that in the form of motion, Alderman Shaw? We have a second. We have a motion and a second for reconsideration. Um, any discussion on the motion? Alderman Genotasio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. Uh, just a little more clarification through you to the Mayor.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm sorry, and, and I know this is new territory. My understanding is that this is not debatable. It's, it's a yes or no. So, I, I do want to hear what you say, but for now, we just need a vote on, on this reconsideration. Is my understanding?
I would just, um...
And the process, as I understand it, I'm sorry to interrupt, um, but just to lay it out there, it's a long night. I'm asking if we can reconsider the vote. If, if it's affirmative, then we will have another vote. And if I've said that wrong, I'm sure I'll be corrected.
A point of order, Mr. Chairman. I think the Roberts rules were interpreted, um, I, I want clarification. You said the majority, the majority of what? The vote? Cause, cause, or the majority of this board? You need to clarify that.
It was, it's, and I read it verbatim, but it says the majority. While Alderman Shaw was in the majority, she wasn't in the supermajority, but she was in the majority. So, again, it's the prerogative of the, of the Chair to say whether it's well-taken or not, but it seems to be consistent with...
Mayor Blake, not to, I just want to make this point. Wouldn't she be in the minority if it failed?
No, she would still be in the majority, just not the superma, the supermajority. And the rules just point to the majority. I know that's technical and, uh, legal mumbo jumbo, but it just says the majority, not a supermajority.
Thank you for the clarification. I'm in favor of moving forward. I just want it to be crystal clear. Thank you.
So, I'm going to put it to a vote for the, um, reconsideration. All in favor? Opposed? Roll call vote, Madam Secretary.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Beatty? Alderman Bevan? Alderman Beer?
This is just a reconsideration of the vote, Alderman Beer.
Alderman Casey? Alderman Germain? Alderman Genotasio? Alderman Golden? Alderman Grant?
Yes.
Alderman Hardiman? Alderman Shaw? Alderman Smith? Alderman Vecarelli? Alderman Vitro? Alderman Vitale? Twelve yes, three no.
Twelve yes and three no. Uh, so, uh, the motion passes. She gets a chance to, we're going to revote on that motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Alderman Shaw.
I believe I can make another motion, is that correct? So, i-if I may, um, I move to add $10,000 to account 4813, Bridges Community Support, bringing the total amount for that category to 360,000.
Motion has been made and seconded. Uh, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Roll call vote, Madam Secretary.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Beatty? Alderman Bevan? Alderman Beer? Alderman Casey? Alderman Germain? Alderman Genotasio?
No.
Alderman Golden? Alderman Grant?
Yes.
Alderman Hardiman? Alderman Shaw? Alderman Smith? Alderman Vecarelli? Alderman Vitro? Alderman Vitale? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 yes. 10 yes, 5 no.
10 yes, 5 no. The, uh, motion passes. Majority, the supermajority is 10, two-thirds of 15.
Mr. Chairman.
Alderman Anderson.
Like to call for recess.
Granted.
Till, until such time as, uh, Finance Director has, uh, the new mill rate and numbers to provide us.
Alderman Germain.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since we're, uh, reconsidering, I'd like to make a motion to reconsider.
We already, we already called a recess, Alderman Germain.
No, we didn't.
Go ahead, Alderman Germain.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to reconsider account number 00104827 for the Literacy Center, um, to reinstate the 3,500.
Alderman Germain, uh, were you in the majority at the time?
I'm not sure.
Madam Secretary, could you read that, uh, vote, please? Page is that, Alderman Germain? Top of page number seven for those. Alderman Germain, you voted no, so we can't consider reconsider. Sorry about that.
Mr. Chairman, on, as we just came to light, uh, I'd like to make a motion to reconsider the Literally, Literary Center, um, addition onto the budget.
Was, uh, Alderman Grant? Yes? Okay. We're going to, we're going to have a vote for reconsider. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm sorry, but that's a little, little, okay, uh, roll call vote, Madam Secretary, I'm sorry.
Okay, this is for reconsideration to add a Literacy Center? Correct?
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Beatty? Alderman Bevan? Alderman Beer? Alderman Casey? Alderman Germain? Alderman Genotasio? Alderman Golden? Alderman Grant?
Yes.
Alderman Hardiman? Alderman Shaw? Alderman Smith? Alderman Vecarelli? Alderman Vitro? Alderman Vitale?
11 yes, 4 no. The vote makes reconsideration of the vote. Now, we're going to put it through.
Point of information, Mr. Chairman.
Alderman Anderson.
Who seconded that motion?
Alderman, uh, Germain.
Thank you.
One of them. All right, so everyone understands, we just voted on the reconsideration. It was favorable, so now we're going to put it to a vote for the second time. All those in favor?
Aye.
I thought he made a motion.
I'm sorry. He made a motion to reconsider, but he didn't make a motion to, to add, add, add the 3,500 to a Literacy Center. You want to make a motion?
Alderman Germain?
Alderman Grant, sorry, that's right, Alderman Germain couldn't, couldn't make that motion. Here we go. Go ahead, Alderman Grant, you want to do us a favor and make a motion?
Absolutely. I'd like to make a motion to add, uh, new account 1001084827, Literacy Volunteers of Southern Connecticut in the amount of 3,500 for the fiscal year 2016-2017.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Alderman Genotasio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, to you, Mr. Chairman. I know that this is at your discretion and to entertain these, um, considerations, and I just would caution, maybe in the future, this kind of does set a precedent in some fashion. I, I just don't want to see this become the norm because technically speaking, we could be here all night reconsidering, and I know that you're trying to be fair, and I do recognize that, and I appreciate it. I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Genotasio. Alderman Beatty?
Yes, I understand that it's in the rules, the bylaws of the Board of Aldermen, that it's not up to your discretion, right? It's, uh, by rule. One can ask...
Up to the Chairman. Meanwhile, we have to vote on that, uh, motion. All, everyone understands the motion? All that Alderman Grant made? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Roll call vote, Madam Secretary, please.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Beatty? Alderman Bevan? Alderman Beer? Alderman Casey? Alderman Germain? Alderman Genotasio? Alderman Golden? Alderman Grant?
Yes.
Alderman Hardiman? Alderman Shaw? Alderman Smith? Alderman Vecarelli? Alderman Vitro? Alderman Vitale?
11 yes, 4 no. Uh, motion passes. We are in recess. We are now out of recess. Alderman Vecarelli.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, I'd like to, uh, I'd like to read, uh, an ordinance establishing a budget for the City of Milford for fiscal year 2016-17, setting the mill rate and establishing a due date in accordance with the provisions of the Connecticut General Statutes and...